...to order. Mr. Weaver will not be able to be here today. Um, so I guess we'll wait for that one.
Ms. Alvera?
Here.
Mr. Delgado?
Here.
Ms. Fite?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Russell? Ms. Solama?
Ms. Russell is excused. She's not coming today. She, her husband called and said she was out of town and she wouldn't be here today. Did you know Mr. Russell was on the board this morning?
I said yes.
Yeah, um, she, uh, she said out of town and she wouldn't be here. That was the call that we got.
As long as she's well. Ms. Solama? Ms. Saratelli?
Here.
Mr. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. Weaver.
Okay, um, announcement is compliance with sunshine law.
We're gonna be fine.
Um, no listeners. Um, reading of the minutes for April 16th, 2013.
I move that be, uh, accepted as presented.
I second.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Treasure, treasurer's report, May 2013.
Okay, everyone, hello? Um, paid the bills. I want to bring your attention to 42213 on the bill list, since that's usually not there. Seven.
That's seven? This is seven?
No.
That's seven?
No.
Thank you. Elevator company?
Yes, for $7,129, it's for elevator maintenance.
Yeah, see how well they maintain it. And you pay that?
It's quarterly.
For us to walk up?
One of them is quarterly.
I'm always saying. Well, we have had so much trouble with that elevator.
Just in the last three days, it has been running consistently well.
Since the last time we broke it. We had problems with it.
But I'm just saying.
A few times, yeah, but since then it's been okay.
But right now it's not.
Uh, they're here, they're fixing it, and it, it does get serviced, so, is what I want to point out. It does get serviced. Um, let's see, anything else I wanted to point out on the bill list? No, everything else was, oh, the, the bill for the Star, I did pay the bill for the Star ledger. Very expensive to advertise. Yeah, very expensive to advertise, so that's another bill. Um, that, that one was for 708 on the first, on the sixth page. Uh, so that was paid, and everything else was in order, so those two are the, the new things. Anyone have any questions? All right, motion to pay the bills for...
To approve the treasurer's report.
Uh, to approve the treasurer's report.
I second the motion.
And motion to pay the bills for May.
Hold on.
Oh, true.
Is this, is somebody expecting it?
Yes.
Yes.
Saratelli. Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli? Yes. Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
And now the presentation and approval of bills for May 17th, 2013.
Motion to pay the bills as presented for May.
Second.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli? Yes. Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
And I will do the budget report during the committee report. Thank you, everyone.
Reports for standing committees?
I guess that's back to me.
Okay, I'm gonna pass out, well, actually, let's do this. I'm gonna pass this, we have to deal with the current budget in this fiscal year. I could've just handed it to the table, but I know.
Thanks.
Okay. The first, the top column, you'll see, that's all our surpluses. So we see here temporary employee, dental insurance, pension, Medicare, health benefits, and salaries, the big one totaling $87,800. Those are where we have surpluses for the current year. However, we have deficits in the categories below, which is insurance, telephone, E-Port, branch security, telephone, internet, data line, security, maintenance, elevator, heat and AC, security, prescription, social security, membership, gas and heat. So Ms. Key has indicated to me that with, the board needs to approve a transfer in order for those categories and deficit get paid. So I motion, well, everyone will take a look at it first, and then, if you have any questions, let me know.
What are the two telepho, just the two separate listings on the telephone? These are two separate types of...
From what I understand of, of the bills, um, one is Verizon bills for data and...
Okay.
Phone. I don't, Ms. Key, if I could, that's correct, okay. So, and it comes as two separate bills.
It's two categories, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, and make a motion that we accept the budget modification.
Second.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fite? Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of the current budget. Right now, what I'm gonna pass out is the project, um, the, the proposed budget for next year. So everyone, please take a look at it. After you take a look at it, I'll go over everything.
So who, excuse me, did we have this before, or this was changed?
The, I don't believe they were included in the package before, were they, Mrs. Key?
No, this is, this is also your finance committee.
Yes, this is also the finance committee.
So the finance committee created this?
Yeah. Mrs. Key and, um, our accountant created the framework, then we went over it as a committee, made some adjustments, cut it.
Got it. Who's on, I'm sorry, I don't have that with me, but who's on the finance committee then?
It's me, Mr. Weaver, and Ms. Solama, she wasn't present, um, and Mr. Weaver's on every committee, so.
Right.
This is the projected one.
Yeah.
For the next year. Now, this isn't set in stone, it's just, you know, what you're...
This is what we, we have a good handle of what we think what, what the money from City Hall and from the state's gonna be, but it's subject to change.
And the expenses are based on the history of the previous.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Okay, to go over briefly, municipal aid, it's, it's flat for this year, same as last year, however, uh, City Hall has not done their budget yet, so it could change, it could go down, I doubt it's gonna go up. Okay. I believe most likely it will stay flat, but just for everyone to know, it can change and it could go down. Same thing with state aid, the state does their budget at the end of, in the end of June into July. Revenues have been up a little bit for the state, so I don't believe it's going to go down, however, understand that that $55,000 is much slower than it used to be historically. I believe we, we used to get 155, around 155,000, it's been 55,000 now for a while. So most likely that will stay at that figure. The first things we went over, uh, the first things we went over was library income. Uh, the committee felt we were overestimating our income, and they did make adjustments based of our conversation with them. So if you look at video rentals, we were estimating that we would receive $18,000 of income, that has been cut down to $4,500, and hopefully we do reach that. And same thing for fines and fees, we were estimating $18,000, that has been cut down to $15,000, and that seems more in line with projections. So we did cut down on what we thought our revenues would be for the library. And then there's the interest income, which is pretty consistent, our fine fees account, which is simple interest, certificate of deposit, that doesn't change much. Since the budget was flat, uh, most things were funded as is, continuing from this year. What the budget, uh, committee recommended was that we cut $30,000 from salaries, since that there always to be, there's always a surplus in salaries, and to use that to fund other expenses for next year, as Mrs. Key and Raul saw fit, where we have, for example, heating, we recommended a boost in heating, and that has been included in this projected budget.
How about unforeseen things that come up, repairs and stuff?
We have a loan for repairs.
We, um, the budget does have some room for, for play, it's not to the bone, everything's not to the bone, so there is room in case for emergencies. There is still, we still left room for salaries in case someone needs to get hired, so there is possibility for that, if the need arises, if Ms. Key sees the need, or the future director sees the need. So it wasn't cut completely, we just adjusted it $30,000. As you see, for this year, we had a surplus in salaries at $61,000, so cutting it 30, 30, and leaving an extra 30 there. And then I'll take questions, if anyone has any questions at this point.
Are we pretty much, uh, down to sort of bare bones in personnel?
Are we absolutely all?
No, no, I'm just...
Yep, yes, we are, uh, it's where the bulk of your budget goes.
Oh, I know, no, I know that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we...
No, no, I'm not...
No, we are enough, but we are absolutely, to answer your question simply, we, we are.
We do, we did just come out of union negotiation, so employees, they get a raise, and that benefits, uh, who knows what they're gonna be next year, so, budget's flat.
Well, it's an automatic, isn't it, a 2% automatic with the state? With raises?
The, the year, the salaries are negotiated by the union, and so this year, it's the third year on the present contract, and as of July 1st, believe it or not, the union negotiated a 1% increase.
Well...
That's, that's what they're getting July 1st.
Look, you know, jobs are hard, it, it's the day and age.
No, it seems like we're still, we're still funding books at a big amount, we're still doing the necessary to keep the library functioning, so. No other questions? Budget? Motion to...
Make a motion to approve the report.
Motion to pass the budget, approve the budget as presented.
By the committee.
Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
So the projected budget will be sent to the state, the chief financial officer, as you've approved it, and then they will look at it, the council will look at it, and then you'll know by the end of the year exactly...
Who's the chief financial officer?
His name is Tony Vingara.
He's the city's chief of...
Yes. And he will, unfortunately, even though the fiscal year begins on July 1st, we don't usually get our final budget amount until almost the end of the year.
And thank you for, uh, Mrs. Key and Raul for taking our comments into consideration.
And thank you for the wonderful way you presented it. Very much appreciated.
Okay, um, reports of special committees? Oh, the personnel, um, committee report will, since it's personnel, will be in closed session. So we'll go in closed session now? Or no, we're gonna do the report first, I'm sorry, yes, so report from, um, Mrs. Key.
Okay, my report is basically as I wrote it in your packet. Uh, one of the things that happened here, uh, over the last month, that it's the first time we did it, but our teen librarian, uh, recognized April as National Youth Entrepreneurship Month, and he actually partnered with the teen department over at the city, and I went into the computer lab and found out that we had 25 kids, and that's, we just don't get, for teens, that's a lot. The first week, he talked about business types and business structures, and we said, will they come back? They came back next week, as a matter of fact, the youth officer, youth services trusted them over here. The second week, uh, you know, they talked about how to start a business. Um, we also, one of the things that caused a lot of interest in the library was, we had caterpillars in the children's room, and a, you know, one of the mesh cages, and of course, we watched them transform into butterflies, and then we set them free, and not only were the children interested, but the parents were also interested, never, had never done that before, we'd never had a butterfly garden.
That's interesting.
So that went quite well, it was on our, you know, we had it on our Facebook, and people were able to see it the whole nine yards. Outreach tomorrow, we will be attending John Marshall School, as we do every year, they have a fantastic career day over there every year, and we are always represented. Um, every year, as we have done since I've been here, down in the port section, they have what they call July Fest, and the library are, always participates in that, and will be participating again this year. Teen department volunteers working at our table.
Excuse me? I hate to interrupt you, but could I ask for a special favor?
Sure.
Could we go into closed session, because I don't think I can stay on, how many?
Uh, we just, you just...
Doable?
And I'm finished, I was just gonna talk about the teen volunteers, let me just finish this up quickly. One of the things that we do in our teen department is that we provide teen volunteer opportunities, as you know, high school students in Elizabeth have to satisfy a certain number hours, volunteer hours, and they do it here. And so, Ms. Alvera, we better request that you go into closed session.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Alvera?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
It's, it's, it's gonna come, well, we don't have it working on the new business, no?
Okay, but I know we had, we had to get plumber in.
I, yeah.
So we should do is... The water was closed for a day and a half, so...
We should probably, um, note it for the next meeting?
Oh, because I had asked last June about contacting American Water Resources about getting insurance, the line.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna note it so that we can put on, on the next agenda.
But remember, you came back and told us later that it did not apply to us, we need to find that in the minutes.
Did it?
Yeah, we finally knew on that, and we did not meet the qualifications for it, I remember that.
No. So was it only houses, they don't, residential, they don't do commercial?
But they have a whole commercial section, so I wonder why they do that. It's in the minutes.
It's in the minutes.
We'll find, we'll find them for you. Because I remember this coming up.
That was the first thing I thought of, you know, we could have a whole line put in from the street, from the, enter to the, to the street, you know?
Yeah, I just saw that.
But...
Usually that's, because I have it personally, right, the same?
Me too.
But there's a dollar limit on it, they won't pay the whole cost, they'll pay it up to a certain dollar limit.
They'll pay more than the thousands...
Like $7,500 or something.
The thousands that it's gonna cost you to, to do it, so...
But it's, they are, it is flowing, again, thank goodness, it's not backed up, so that...
Okay, and also we have the roof problem.
That one, that we have to talk about, Ms. Alvera.
Okay, sorry.
But that one, we've been on it.
Well, we had, are we gonna do that for next one?
New business.
Oh, okay, she, for, uh, I wasn't aware, I didn't realize, because they worked on the roof at Elmore all summer long, I didn't know that they only did the flat portion, I thought they had did the whole roof.
So really quickly, we're just gonna go through the, because we're, right now, we're right past, we moved closed session up, we're gonna do reading of communications now, and then we'll get to new business, and we'll...
Okay, no problem.
So reading of communications?
In your packet, I included a letter from Beverly Williams, uh, she does the AARP package, I thought it was a very nice letter.
It was very nice.
And so, uh, that's basically what I had.
So that, unfinished business, whole business, security system?
The security system, I was on the phone today with them, they ordered the equipment, uh, they will be coming on Wednesday, May the 29th, to deliver the equipment. The actual installation will begin on June 30th, the day after Labor Day.
Uh-huh. June, you mean Labor Day?
Memorial Day.
You mean Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Labor Day. She's already left.
She's hanging around, she's hanging around me too long, it's catching now.
It's the time, it's the time, but no, I'm sorry, Memorial Day.
June 3rd, okay.
It's, it's the Tuesday after Memorial Day. And so, uh, I said to him, how long will this installation take? And he indicated approximately 180 man-hours, so if it's two men, it would be 90 hours, and they will have usually at least two people here at any given time, so...
So that's like two and a half, three weeks?
Yeah, two weeks, 80 hours, it'd be two weeks.
Veronica, I have to go back.
To?
My report.
Oh, wait, isn't, wasn't it already approved?
Yes, no, there's something else that needs to get a board approval.
Oh, in it?
Yeah.
In this?
No, 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 it's not in there, it's something I have to say.
All right, hold on, let's, let's just finish with the...
Okay.
Old business and new business first, okay?
Okay, uh, so that's the update on the security system. So hopefully, by the time you, it would be nice if by the time you come for your June meeting, you would be able to see it. And, and remember, they're not just installing the security system here, it is also being installed in the branches.
Is it really? I didn't know that that was inclusive, you...
That was one of the components.
Yeah.
I didn't know that. And what will happen is...
That's, that's good.
We can sit in this building and see exactly what is happening in those branches.
No, I'm very, very glad, do you know that a few weeks ago, I was checking out books at Elmore, and a guy came in with a big machete on his side?
I know who he is, he has that thing around his head, a bandana or something.
What?
I spoke to him, he, but you know what, I think he's come back to Elmore, because I went here one day, security guard came and alerted me that, you know, a gentleman had a dagger.
And it's a dagger, you're talking, I'm talking about a machete.
But this was, this was not a machete, from what we could see, and he, uh, you know, he said something to the, you know, you know, be easy, we're not gonna, I'm not using it on anybody. I was like, sir, sir, you cannot bring it in this building. And so, I talked to Mr. Barbenow, who is your branch manager, and I said to Mr. Barbenow, be on the lookout, because what he does is he goes back and forth, when, when it gets too hot over here for him, he goes to Elmore.
Well, all I know is...
So he's back to Elmore.
I was standing there like...
Did anybody say anything to him?
No, he came and he went.
Because we, you can, we can, the staff can ask him to leave.
And all I thought to...
It's a weapon.
And all I thought to myself is, in my, my mind, you can't walk out with a book, God forbid, but you can walk in with a bazooka, and, and the thing won't go, go off, you know? It's, uh, but, so that's why I'm very, very glad that the, that the security is gonna be at all the branches, that's terrific.
That's crazy.
The branches are part of the library.
I know.
Our stepchildren.
I know.
All right, that's good, though. So budget for fiscal year 23?
Perfect opening, good.
And Mr., Mr...
Now segue into the budget.
Yeah, perfect opening, good. Uh, in our conversation at committee meeting, we discovered that we have a bookmobile that hasn't been in use for many years.
Yes, that was my, I was going to bring that up, because it's a new business, so you...
Because you're the finance committee too.
No, I'm not on the finance...
Oh, you're not, no?
No. No, but I was just...
Quitting about it?
Yes, I was gonna wait till new business, and the same thing.
Um, it hasn't been used for many, many years, however, we still pay insurance on it. So the committee has recommended to Mrs. Key, but we had to bring it up, she indicated we had to bring it up to the board, that we sell it, or that we give the permission of Mrs. Key to get rid of it.
Absolutely.
Since we still pay insurance on it. We're not cutting services since it hasn't been in service for...
Well, it had, it wasn't in service when I...
It was sitting in, in the back of Elmore.
But I, but you know, for a change, for a change, Ms. Saratelli, I am happy to be able to say, it wasn't in use when I came here, so, you know, I found it like that.
But it was, but it was just an eyesore sitting out here, am I correct?
The city determined that we needed to put it...
But why are we paying insurance on...
If you own it, and it's parked on your property, you have to keep insurance on it.
Really? Even if it's up like on four, four, uh...
It has to be registered.
So somebody could get hurt through some kid playing, or it could get hurt in the...
Oh, oh, they could go by, oh, I know, I understand now.
I'm not sure if we could get much money for it, but it will save money on the insurance, so we recommend, and motion to the board, can we...
Donate it.
Motion to, uh...
What, what, may I ask you to, uh, do a motion to do some fact finding?
Fact finding, perfect.
Do some fact finding. Is it better to sell it? Is it better to try to donate it to someone and take it, you know, well, we don't pay tax anyway, we're a tax exempt, but, but, but sell it, or, um, give it away? It's not a simple process.
Realistically, it's all rusted out, it hasn't been used in a gazillion years, so I don't...
Do we really need to put on, I mean, if I, like, if we give you the authority to get rid of it, we rely on your judgment?
Well, what I will do is I will do some fact finding, and when we meet in June, I'll tell you.
Okay.
I will talk to some other libraries, and how they've handled the situation, and what's the best way for us to go.
That's a good idea.
And I'll report back to you then.
And when the economy gets better, we're gonna get a brand new...
Okay, so, everyone's in agreement now, uh, Mrs. Key, please do some fact finding about the bookmobile, since we all want to save on insurance. That's all.
All right, good, thank you. So, um, I guess that's it, the new business, is that all we had for the budget then?
Mm-hmm. He already presented it.
I'm good.
He already presented it, okay. So unfinished business is good, new business?
The HVAC contract bid, uh, I must tell you that we've had a real problem of doing a bid. We're required to bid our services, but we've had a great deal of trouble getting anyone to bid on the HVAC system, because first of all, it's antiquated, and second of all, the, the, the company that has taken care of it for many, many years, has been, over 20 years, has been Carrier, so they can bid on it because they know it. When you have companies come in who don't know that system and see how old it is, they are reluctant to actually put in a bid. And so, the engineering department, they, uh, Dan Lewis, who, he is...
Dan Lewis.
Okay, he's, he's a new engineer over at the, at the city, at City Hall, and he worked with us to come up with a specific, some specs that he felt were fair for everybody concerned. So the bid, uh, is in process now. It has been advertised, it's in process, we've had three companies, well, we had Carrier, our present company, pick it up in addition to two other companies. Uh, the, um, bid opening is going to be on June 3rd, uh, that we've, we've helped, we had, we had a date for walkthrough, because for the HVAC bid, you must see it, you can't bid in the dark. So we didn't have anybody come, Carrier's not coming, because they know the system, but what we're having, we did a tour in the morning, and this week, we're doing a tour But what we're having, we did a tour in the morning and this week we're doing a tour in the afternoon, trying to, you know, make it convenient for people. So our tour is this Thursday. Uh, and we're hoping that those people, other two companies will at least come. Because if they don't come, then that sort of indicates that they're not bidding, because you cannot put in a bid if you do not come and, and look at the system. And they're actually bidding on the system here and at more, because Elmore is the only other branch that we really are responsible for. And so that's where we are, so that is in process, June third is the bid opening. Uh, it will be here in this office at ten AM. So if, if any of you would like to come, you're, you're welcome to. But that's the bid opening. So that's the HVAC contract. What we're doing now is we are working with Carrier on a month-to-month basis. But the time has come now for us to really, we should have at least a two-year contract, so I will keep you posted. Well, next month, I'll be able to tell you at the, at the meeting, uh, what the results of the bid were. Okay?
Okay, so now with the roof, we're getting bids in.
Wait, one more thing, I'm sorry, the audit and then the roof.
The audit, uh, is still in process. Uh, the auditor was here, it's been about three weeks ago, they came in, inspected all of our books. Uh, and, you know, did all the things that there's, contacted the lawyer to see if we had any legal action against us by anybody, uh, and checked our bank statements, they're very thorough. And so now I'm waiting for the final report. From the eight years that I've been here, we've gotten clean audits. I am hoping that the last one will be clean too, I don't anticipate a problem. But we are obligated because we get state funds for having to audit every single year, so we are finishing up the audit for this year.
Thank you, and then now the roof at Elmore?
Um, oh my goodness.
Oh, honey, I didn't create holes in the roof, you know, I didn't wish it on anybody.
The roof at Elmore, there are two roofs, there, there's a pitched roof and a front
And then there's a flat roof in the back.
The flat roof in the back was just replaced, on an emergency basis, I might add, last summer. Last year.
All summer long, they worked on that too, because we didn't have parking there.
Now, what the situation is, is I've had, I called Tony Batina, who is in charge of public bills, and he just, he said, Tony, give me your roofer, I need somebody that I can count on, give me a decent bid, that's a baseline. So he came out and he indicated that the roof is fine, the pitched roof is fine, the flat roof is fine. It's not the shingles.
I mean, the shingle portion.
No, it's the gutters, thank you. It's the gutters. The gutters are, the gutters are leaking, they're copper. And we don't, he indicated we don't wanna replace them, because you know how expensive it is to replace copper. But he, he sent a proposal, sixty-five hundred dollars. I have to get three quotes. And so right now, you know, Arnold Mira and
Oh, I know Arnold, I know Arnold very well.
He did the, you know, he was the contractor, he worked
He did the renovations in the, in the whole building.
He's giving me a second quote, and then I have to get a third quote, because we have to get three quotes. We're not obligated to get three quotes if it's under the bid threshold.
Right.
Which is seventeen-five, but the auditor said to me, advised me to always get three.
Well, sixty-five hundred is really like a relief, what you're telling me, because at least it's not, it's not, you know, eighty thousand dollars to
No, no, that's the first, that's the first bid we've had, and, and do we have it?
Did any of them give you an idea on what they're allowing for the copper? Are they gonna be able to take the copper, because that's valuable?
But they're not taking the copper.
They better not take the copper.
No, they repair it, it's not advertised, we have
Because the next thing you know, people will be there with, uh, ladders, taking it off.
Don't laugh, the church across the street from us, St. Genevieve's, they stole, they stole all the
St. Gene?
No.
Did they really say?
In the church.
And that's an Elmore hill, right?
Well, they're stealing it, they're stealing
There is Elmore hills, that's a, that's a made-up term, there is Elmore hills, Elmore is flat, I mean, it's a hill, say, please.
Oh, you're getting technical.
Please.
Yeah, well, I'm
We're not gonna comment, right? We don't, we don't have any comments from the public. All right, so then can we make a motion, are we done with that then?
I'm getting us out of here quickly.
I have the motion to go into closed session.
No, to get, to get, oh, yeah. We're already closed.
No, I have the motion to go into closed session again.
Okay.
It's brief.
You, you tell them, I'm, I'm getting out of the line of fire.
It's brief, I promise.
I'll say.
The second.
All right, I'll second it.
Ms. Alvaro?
Yes.
Mr. Belvado?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Make a motion to rescind the motion that we removed Rachel Kingland's health benefits at the end of the two thousand thirteen fiscal year?
Second.
Ms. Alvaro?
Yes.
Mr. Belvado?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Well, it's a carriage.
That's it, so I'm making motion to adjourn your meeting?
Second.
Ms. Alvaro?
Yes.
Mr. Belvado?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.